I would like, I would like to call to order. Nope, is my microphone not working? Testing, testing. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Forest Grove City Council. The date is September 23rd. The time is 7:12. Will the city recorder please call?
Councillor Gasserson here. Council President Rippey.
Here.
Councillor Martinez.
Here.
Councillor Marshall.
Here.
Councillor Valenzuela.
Here.
Councillor Ewing.
Here.
Mayor Wenzel.
Here.
Forest Grove City Council meetings are located on the land of the Tualatin Kalapuas, who call themselves the Attilaati. They are now part of the Confederate tribes of Grand Ron. Will the audience and the council please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Testing. I feel like this microphone is my least favorite, but Mariah hears it all the time. So I'll continue. Our proclamations tonight, we are going to begin with banned book week, whereas the freedom to read is essential to our democracy and is protected by our constitution. And whereas some persons work to remove or limit access to reading materials, to label views as controversial, to distribute lists of books or authors considered objectable, and to purge libraries of materials reflecting the diversity and history of our society. And whereas Americans favor free enterprise and ideas and expressions and can exercise critical judgment, recognize propaganda and misinformation, make their own decisions about what they read and believe, and exercise the responsibilities that accompany this freedom. And whereas intellectual freedom is essential to the preservation of a free society and a creative culture. And conformity limits the range and variety of inquiry and expression on which democracy, on which our democracy and culture depend. And whereas the American Library Association's banned book week is observed each year as a reminder to Americans not to take their freedom for granted. And whereas banned books week celebrates the freedom to choose and to express one's opinion, even if that opinion might be considered unorthodox or unpopular, and stresses the importance of ensuring the availability of different viewpoints to all those who wish to read them. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Forest Grove does hereby proclaim September 22nd to September 28th, 2024, as banned books week in Forest Grove, Oregon, and calls upon the people to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance.
Alright. Proclamación, semana de los libros prohibidos, del 22 al 28 de septiembre de 2024. Considerando que la libertad de leer es esencial para nuestra democracia y está protegida por nuestra constitución. Y considerando que algunas personas trabajan para eliminar o limitar el acceso a materiales de lectura, etiquetear puntos de vista como controversiales, distribuir listas de libros a autores considerados objetables y purgar bibliotecas de materiales que reflejan la diversidad y la historia de nuestra sociedad. Y considerando que los estadounidenses favorecen la libre iniciativa en materia de ideas y expresión. Y pueden ejercer un juicio crítico, reconocer la propaganda y la desinformación, tomar sus propias decisiones sobre lo que leen y creen, y ejercer las responsabilidades que acompañan a esta libertad. Y considerando que la libertad intelectual es esencial para la preservación de una sociedad libre y una cultura creativa, y que la conformidad limita el alcance y la variedad de investigaciones y expresiones de las que depende nuestra democracia y nuestra cultura. Y considerando que la semana de los libros prohibidos de la Asociación de Bibliotecas de Estados Unidos se celebra cada año como un recordatorio a los estadounidenses de que no deben dar por sentada su libertad. Y considerando que la semana de los libros prohibidos celebra la libertad de elegir y expresar la propia opinión, incluso si esa opinión puede considerarse o ortodoxa o impopular. Y enfatiza la importancia de garantizar la disponibilidad de esos puntos de vista diversos a todos los que deseen leerlos. Ahora, por lo tanto, el Consejo Municipal de la Ciudad de Forest Grove, por la presente, proclama los días del 22 al 28 de septiembre del 2024 como la semana de los libros prohibidos en Forest Grove, Oregon, y hace un llamado a la gente a unirse a sus conciudadanos de todo Estados Unidos para reconocer y participar en esta celebración especial, en testimonio de lo cual ha suscrito la presente y ha hecho que el sello de la Ciudad de Forest Grove, Oregon, se reemplace en este día 23 de septiembre. Nuestra alcaldesa, Melinda Wenzel.
Our next proclamation is for National Arts and Humanities Month. Whereas the arts and humanities embody much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect, and imagination of humankind. And whereas arts and humanities represents the freedoms of expression that empowers Americans to speak and think independently. Okay, and creatively. And whereas arts and humanities play a crucial role in promoting individual well-being, connecting cultures, highlighting inequities, and making communities healthier and stronger. And whereas the month of October has been recognized as National Arts and Humanities Month by thousands of art and cultural organizations, communities, and states across the country, as well as by the White House and Congress for more than two decades. And whereas National Arts and Humanities Month focuses on equitable access to the arts, encourages participation in the arts, allows governments and businesses to show their support of the arts, and raises public awareness about the positive impact of the arts and humanities in our communities and lives. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Forest Grove does hereby proclaim October 2024 as National Arts and Humanities Month in Forest Grove, Oregon, and calls upon the people to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance.
Proclamación, mes nacional de las artes y las humanidades. Considerando que las artes y las humanidades encarnan gran parte de la sabiduría, el intelecto, y la imaginación acumulados de la humanidad. Y considerando que las artes y las humanidades representan la libertad de expresión que permite a los estadounidenses hablar y pensar de manera independiente y creativa. Y considerando que las artes y las humanidades desempeñan un papel crucial en la promoción del bienestar individual, la conexión de culturas, la puesta de relieve de las desigualdades, y la creación de comunidades más saludables y fuertes. Y considerando que el mes de octubre ha sido reconocido como el mes nacional de las artes y las humanidades por miles de organizaciones artísticas y culturales, comunidades y estados de todo el país, así como por la Casa Blanca y el Congreso durante más de dos décadas. Y considerando que el mes nacional de las artes y las humanidades se centra en el acceso equitativo a las artes, fomenta la participación de las artes, permite a los gobiernos y las empresas mostrar su apoyo a las artes y aumenta la conciencia pública sobre el impacto positivo de las artes y las humanidades en nuestras comunidades y vidas. Ahora, por lo tanto, el Consejo Municipal de la Ciudad de Forest Grove, por la presente, proclama octubre del 2024 como mes nacional de las artes y las humanidades en Forest Grove, Oregon, y hace un llamado a las personas para que se unan a sus conciudadanos en todo Estados Unidos para reconocer y participar en esta celebración especial, en testimonio de lo cual ha suscrito la presente y ha hecho que el sello de la Ciudad de Forest Grove, Oregon, se replace en este día 23 de septiembre 2024. Nuestra alcaldesa, Melinda Wenzel.
Okay, moving on to our next agenda item, item Agenda B, which is public comment. Time provided for anyone wishing to speak to the City Council on an item not on the agenda or on the agenda, but not scheduled for a public hearing. Comments are limited to two minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. The public comment period shall not exceed 30 minutes unless the majority of councilors present vote to extend the time. Zoom attendees may use the raise hand feature to be called on. Okay, so our first public comment is Mr. Dale Feek. Could you please come up to the chair and microphone, please? Our city recorder is passing out written public comment for Mr. Feek. I'm just giving a little. Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Feek.
Chair Wenzel, President Timothy Rippey, and councilors. I'm Dale Feek. Started teaching in Forest Grove in 1966, and I taught in seven schools. Started at Joseph Yale. I love Forest Grove. I sent, you have a summary of what I sent to the Washington County Commissioners. I made public comment on Tuesday, and I'm going to make public comment on the Environmental Quality Commission on Friday. And I also sent it to you. And it relates to the data centers in Oregon, specifically Crane Data Center. And I sent this email on September the 6th. So I'm saying, please read and act to prevent data centers in Oregon, and specifically Crane Data Center in Forest Grove, from becoming the nightmare that is described in September 15th, 2024 New York guest essay by Sean Cooper, an attachment titled "Noisy, Hungry Data Centers Catching Communities by Surprise." And Myra's done a good job because she got this to you, but I looked at the minutes of today's meeting and the attachments are not there. So I hope you'll send the councilors those two attachments. Because what I have here is the summary of that attachment. And if you want to get the detail, you need to read the attachment. "The revolution in artificial intelligence, as promised, has breakthroughs in medical research." You can read on by yourself. I'm going to run out of time. So read that, though, but there are 5,000 data centers that power and keep the cloud above our digital world running. Residents rarely learn how data centers may affect their lives until it's too late. The tactics companies have deployed in recent years to build their massive data centers, networks, or downright mercenary, and regulators now need to step in to make sure the communities most affected by these industrial projects can learn about and evaluate them for themselves. At the moment, without those measures in place, residents and environmental groups have to go up against very large tech. Tech firms largely on their own just to obtain basic details about water, energy, and noise impacts. But protecting communities and the environment from malignant impact of data centers project won't spell the end of that. So please read it. Please get the actual attachments and read it more in detail. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Feek. There is no one else signed up to give public testimony, public comment? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to do so now? Seeing none, I will look online. Are there any Zoom attendees who would like to give public comments? Seeing none, we will move on to item C, the consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will all be adopted with a single motion without separate discussion. Counselors who wish to remove an item from the consent agenda may do so prior to the motion. Any items removed will be discussed and acted upon following the approval of the remaining items. What is the wish of the council?
Move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, the consent agenda was moved by Council President Rippey and seconded by Councillor Marshall. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say aye. Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of 7-2-0. Additions or deletions? City manager, do you have any additions or deletions?
No additions or deletions. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Any proposed by councilors? Seeing none, we will now move on to item E on our agenda, presentations. The council will hold questions until the end of each presentation. A two-minute reminder will be given to the presenter to conclude remarks. Our first presenters tonight are from the Public Arts Commission, giving their annual report, and we have co-chairs, Ms. Dana Eaton and Emily Lux. Come on up, please. Hello, how are you guys doing? I'm doing well, thanks.
We were going to do an interpretive dance, but we decided. We decided this would be more.
Whenever you're ready, you can start.
Okay, so we're going to, we have a little slideshow for you. And we're going to start with, we're going back a little bit. And we wanted to, it's been a while. And just to bring you back to 2022, when we did the mural festival. And we brought four new murals to the city by Alex Eichoff, Ursula Barton, Marcy Kribble, and Allison McClay. We also, Linda Taylor, she also organized Free Carrot Rides one of the days, and that was really, really cool. Put that on the next slide. And the people that got to go on it really enjoyed it, and it was just a really neat way to show people the art in our city. Ready for the next slide? And just to Dana's point, we kind of went back a little bit because a lot of our projects are very long-term. So typically, a project that manifests in one year has been planned for a year or more. So that, or four sometimes. So Meet the Artist Dinner is just a really wonderful opportunity for the community to meet different artists of different disciplines. It's often a hands-on experience. So usually, there's a takeaway or a performance or something that somebody can take with them, whether it's knowledge or an object. Most recently, in the past, it's been a fundraiser for the Arts Commission with like heavy volunteer activities. So the person who's hosting it is volunteering to serve food and that sort of thing. And then artists are typically people from the community. Sometimes it's someone who, like, for example, Ben Dye created the sculpture. And he was the Meet the Artist, he was the artist for the Meet the Artist Dinner so that the community could come and see like some of his process. Because a lot of that is lost when you just look at the final product. Recently, we had a Meet the Artist Dinner that focused on culinary arts, and it was, we did his kitchen. And before that, we had Chesna Colkins, who's a local watercolor artist. And she, she did a demo for people, which was great. And we're ready for the next? Um, we've, for quite a while, I'm not sure what year it started, but it was before I came, and I've been on 10 years. We do mini grants and sponsorships for local folk, local events, and events and performances that fit certain criteria, up to $500. So typically, one of the main criteria is that the event or performance has to be free to the public in some capacity so that, you know, it meets one of our missions of exposing people to different types of art. Most recently, we have given a mini grant or sponsorship to the 97116 Art Show, which is an annual event. This is going to be its seventh year, Chalk Art, Valley Arts, AAE. And then there was the project for Cordelia's Elementary, which you can see on the bottom. For the next? Um, so this is last year, 2023. Um, we had an interesting opportunity. This artist, Michihiro Wasu? Um, passed away, and his, I think it was his nephew, inherited all of his, all of this artwork. And they were moving away from the property where it was all being stored. And so he decided to donate all of these pieces to different cities and different entities. And we were lucky enough to be chosen as one of those, thanks to Kathleen and Pat. Um, so they got to go and look and pick out six pieces. Um, two of those pieces, we ended up donating to Pacific University. And they put those in Barbara's Garden. They kind of renovated that space, and these worked perfectly. I think the one on the right is one, one of the ones that went there. Um, two went to Stites Park, which are the other two that you're seeing. One is right out here in the lobby. And then one other, we are donating to Clearwater Services, and that's going to go at Fern Hill Wetlands soon, I think, in the next couple of years at least. Um, I think that was them. Yeah. Um, okay. Um, so we just started doing the Art Bazaar a few years ago. And last year, we changed the name and the, and the kind of idea of it. And we called it Fall Into Art. So it's still artists with booths. Um, we did it in this room last year in conjunction with the 97116 show to try to, you know, to try to get art activities all over town. And this year, we're trying to do it in the same building that the 97116 show is in. So that's going to be exciting if that works out. Um, last year, we had, I think, eight or nine artists, and a lot of them asked to come back. So that was promising to us that they did well and had fun, and it was worth it for them to be there. Uh, so this is Seven Generations by Kat Tweedy. This is one of the projects that has been very long-term. A lot of you kind of know the backstory. This project started in 2021 and was just unveiled officially on September 11th. We're still working on some safety components, but this, this sculpture is deeply meaningful. This artist really was dedicated to sticking through the whole process, which was often arduous. But the, the end result is so beautiful. And I think this one in particular, I think, is, is something that, I mean, it's called Seven Generations. The concept that she was working with was the idea that all the decisions that we make today should keep in mind how it will benefit seven generations in the future, how we can uplift people seven generations ahead of us. And I think that that's a really incredible concept that we should all be keeping in mind with our actions here. So we had a great, it was nicely attended unveiling on September 11th. And that's the result. It's right, it's right between the, if you haven't seen it, it's between the police station and the library. And this is another sculpture that was kind of hand-in-hand with the Seven Generations. We originally, in 2020, I believe, did a call to try to do a rotating gallery where we had pieces of art on loan from artists. And every two years, those would rotate around so that they would be in different locations. And we didn't get any submissions, and so we had to rethink our plan. Um, so we installed two plinths and then did a call for two different pieces of art that we would own and keep indefinitely. Um, so that's where these two came from. And we did do two separate calls because the first one, we just found one that we really liked. So we did a second call, and that's where we found this one. Um, and we also had an unveiling, like, in August for Joshua Blewett, who's the artist for this one, and he lives in, I don't know, Ridgefield, Washington? Yeah. Um, so fairly local. Um, yeah. The Festival of the Arts, I'm particularly, I mean, I'm excited about all of it, but the festival this year was a really incredible pilot project, and it was a wonderful collaboration between the PAC and Adelante with support from the city and many, many, I can't even really calculate how many volunteer hours went into this. Um, I, I think this is something that we can hopefully carry on in the future years. It's something that, so if you aren't familiar, which I think most of you are, but we're here to report anyway. That this took place over four separate months on the first Wednesday of every month, and it included basically a guide to a lot of different arts performances, arts events. And there were dozens of very different disparate types of arts that people could experience. So the nice part, I think, about that is that sometimes people stumbled, it was already the farmer's market, so sometimes people just stumbled upon something, and all of a sudden, there's a, you know, barbershop quartet or dancers or, you know, musicians, there's writers in the grove, a lot of 2D art, some 3D art, and very many like different booths and takeaways that people could do. Um, there was a belly dancing class that my son attended. I mean, there was just really, a really cool variety. And it was very well received, and I think it's something that could really draw a lot of, I think, most of the people that, based on subcommittee feedback, most of the people that participated are really interested in doing, they're already asking if we're going to do this again because this is one of those things that I think we could really grow into something very, even more well-attended. And this is our upcoming project that we just wanted to throw in there. This is the bathroom building at Lincoln Park. Um, we are, we just have a call out now for a mural around the entire building. Um, and the theme is fun, so we should probably get some really interesting coastal. And that will happen next year, next summer, with the painting will actually.
Get questions for the group? Councillor Valenzuela.
I don't have a question. I just have a comment. I was able to attend the Seven Generation event. And I just want to say thank you for the work you do. I have worked with you, close to you, so I know who you are and the kind of work you do. And I just feel you uplift our town, and I want to say thank you for that because I have a granddaughter that's going to grow up here. And I thank you for how much you're going to contribute.
Thank you so much for coming.
Any other, yeah, I want to say a couple of things. So sometimes when you do a job like this and feel like, oh, you should run for council, it's only two meetings, it's only this many hours, it's only this, it's only that. And so I've heard that with boards and commission. You just meet once a month, and it's an hour meeting, maybe two-hour meetings. But I've been on a number of different commissions for the city in the 10 years I've done this work. And this group, the Public Arts Commission, this is a full-time labor of love, way more hours. They, I mean, I remember the first year I was the liaison, and we had a retreat at someone's house, and Linda Taylor had, I'm not even exaggerating, 10 binders of minutes from every meeting. And I just think that, you know, and everything's fairly, really strategic. The donations of the sculptures, they looked at the map of Forest Grove and were like, geographic representation matters. That's why Fern Hill's getting one. That's why there's one at Pacific. That's why, I mean, this, they're just the care, you can just feel it, the care, the love, the time, the effort is just, and then we reap it in economic development and people coming here and people enjoying our community. And so anyways, I just think this group is so good. So thank you for all the extra hours that you volunteer for our city. Thanks, thank you. Okay, and number two, we have another great nonprofit that supports our city, the Library Foundation, and we have their Vice President of the Library Foundation, Linda Sari. Did I say your last name correctly?
Yeah.
Okay, let's go. Do you want, Colleen, are you just late? Are you coming up too, or no? Just Linda? You're, you're good, Linda, right?
Yeah.
Okay, let's go.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
The Forest Grove Library Foundation used to make some presentations to the City Council on a regular basis, probably twice a year or so. We haven't done that in quite a while. So since a lot of you probably don't know a lot about the foundation, I'll give you a little history. In November of 98, voters in Forest Grove approved a $2.2 million bond measure to expand the 1978 building. It doubled it in size, and construction was finished in 2002. But the bond measure was just for the expansion of the building. There was no money for the original west wing of the library. When you put an expansion on your house, you can see where the old part of your house stops and the new parts starts. And you, unless you remodel the old part to blend in with the new. And so that's what we needed to do. So in March 2001, the Forest Grove Library Foundation formed with community leaders to raise monies to do, to do just that, with a goal with a goal of $1 million. That was a formidable goal at the time, um, but we thought we could do it and we did. Um, current board members include Mike Moore, Bill Ruder, Mike Smith, Kathy Mandis, Patrice Civek, Pete Truax, and recently retired President Rod Beaton. There've been six or eight others who have been on the board in the last 23 years, but they all left for various reasons. Either they passed or, um, life got in the way as it often does. Yeah. Um, a year later in 2002, uh, we formed the Campaign Cabinet of Library Supporters and they met every week for over a year, over two years probably. Um, they hosted dozens of events, contacts, home gatherings, raffles, auctions, dinners, Maggie's Buns events. For those of you who don't know, Maggie Pike, um, used to own a restaurant, um, across from Pacific University and the church. Um, it makes the best, still makes the best, um, cinnamon buns. Um, and she's very, very community oriented still. The Campaign Cabinet also hosted a golf tournament. The Forest Grove Library Foundation was everywhere. From 2002 to May 2006, the Forest Grove Library Foundation raised $1.3 million dollars from foundations, businesses, families and individuals. One-third from foundations, one-third from businesses, one-third from families and individuals. Thousand dollar donations from people, $25 donations. Kids would bring their piggy banks to the library. Um, there was a donation jar on the checkout counter. We had an updated thermometer, um, in the library to show our progress. The city allocated $187,000 of library enhancement fund monies. That consisted of bequests and donations, um, held in this, held by the city for years for future use in the library. We had a $100,000 gift from the Christian Science Society, which went toward renovation of the west wing of the library and the purchase of a grand piano. The piano is widely used now for recitals and library events. There's, there's a lot of library teachers or, uh, piano teachers in the area. And so I'm not a piano person, but I guess there's a big difference between playing on an upright piano and a grand piano. And so these, uh, kids, sometimes, you know, small kids, little kids, um, get to come to the library and, and play what they've learned on a grand piano. And they're just, they're just beaming. Um, it's great. So the renovation of the library was completed in 2007. Since then, the foundation has raised funds for many campaigns. Dickensburg Memorial Garden with a mural provided through the Public Arts Commission. The Ed Carpenter Molly's Garden Glass Art in memory of his mother Molly. Uh, with Eric Cannon, Greg Kribble, who made the pillars. It's right in the, uh, as you come in, either the front or the back door of the library, it's the glass thing up there and it's, it's great. Roger's Room Enhancement and other smaller projects. Recently, the foundation received a $50,000 memorial donation for the children's area. The local donor wants us to make the area whimsical and inviting and staff is working on that concept now. A teen council was formed in 2016 with three members. They now have over 30. The newly designated teen zone was developed near the main desk with the foundation purchasing appropriate furniture. And a glass partition is coming in the next few weeks to finish that teen zone. It won't be soundproof and it's not that we adults can't go in there, but it's their room. I mean, you know how teenagers are. No offense, anybody. Dickensburg lived in Cornelius and was a local immigration attorney. He was very involved with Friends of the Forest Grove Library and the foundation for many, many years. He, and he was a wonderful human being. When he died suddenly in 2015, in consultation with his widow, Rosalie, and his son, Brian, we just, the foundation decided to build a memorial garden just outside the south door of the library. Eric Cannon designed a metal archway to the garden and through the Public Arts Commission, Marcy Kribble, a local artist, also designed a beautiful large mural, which you saw in the previous, uh, presentation. The foundation and Friends of the Library paid for the plantings and irrigation in the garden. Currently, we, we are all now discussing how the city, the foundation and the friends group can work together to maintain the garden for continued success. The foundation is also working on getting a volunteer weeding army together. So if, uh, I'll be in touch if any of you are interested in that next spring. Um, foundation has talked about a donor recognition vehicle for 15 years. Just a couple of months ago, uh, Carrie Van De Zandt, a local architect, volunteered to help us with this project. We're very excited about it. So when you go in the library and you, and you look at the Molly's Garden art, which is up above, the pillars that hold it up are made of wood by Greg Kribble and metal by Eric Cannon. So if you picture, picture these and they're, they're like, they're big at the top and they go down this way. So if you picture that, picture it upside down. So our, um, donor recognition vehicle is going to be a pillar exactly like that. And then there's going to be, it's like a bookshelf. And on these bookshelves are going to be, um, slats that look like bookspines. And on the spines are going to be names of donors. Um, and then, and then in other places and then there's four sides of it. So there's a lot of donor names and on, uh, other sides of it, there will be, um, some other, you know, history of the foundation and of the library. Um, we're all in the planning stages right now of, of that, um, piece of art and we're very excited about it. Throughout my talk, I've told you about different projects that involve others and all of them have a Forest Grove connection. Metal artist Eric Cannon, wood artist Greg Kribble and his daughter, artist Marcy Kribble, international artist Ed Carpenter. His mother Molly was a Forest Grove Library supporter. And I believe they grew up, um, he grew up, um, in the Gales Creek area. I'm not positive about that. And Carrie Van De Zandt, the architect, lives in Forest Grove and visits the library often. The foundation always tries to keep things local if we bring in someone to some artistic or crafty kind of thing. Um, we try to keep it local. The library is fortunate to have three groups of supporters, the Library Foundation, the Friends of the Library and the Library Commission. Almost every year we have a gathering of the groups to discuss common concerns and share our goals and accomplishments. We also invite city council members. This year's gathering is set for Sunday, October 6th, 3:00 to 5:00 PM at the library. Refreshments will be available and I hope you all will join us. Forest Grove Library Foundation has contributed more than $1.5 million in donations, secured grants and in-kind contributions to the city's library since 2001 for the past 23 years. Forest Grove Libraries, the foundation is a thriving, successful community or organization and we ain't going anywhere. Any questions?
Any questions for Linda? I don't have a question. I just have a comment. So thank you for your presentation and thank you and the rest of the volunteers. Oftentimes, we just actually had a work session earlier tonight and we have really difficult, I mean, everyone has difficult decisions, but funding things can be really difficult when you live off a city levy, right? And so when I think of the Library Foundation, to me, you're like, our, the city is like, you just help us so much. Like we have to put our revenue towards the basic needs, the services. And then sometimes there's gaps that we can't, that we would like to fill that we can't fill. And I feel like you're our guardian angels that come in and say like, hey, we'll help with the furniture in the teen library section. Hey, we'll help finish this west side or what, right? We'll do this portion and we'll bring in this art. So, um, I think that I agree with what you're saying, that the groups that the library has are so strong and so valuable. The Library Commission, the foundation and the friends. And so I just hope that we can all come and celebrate these great volunteers on October 6th. Uh, share food, share stories and maybe check out a book. I guess we won't be able to because it'll be closed, but you can come back later.
Yeah. Um, and that was, uh, when we started, that was part of our mission. Mission statement is that, uh, we're not going to supplant or, you know, take the place of any city funds because it is the city library. But there, like you said, there are a lot of things that the city can't afford. Um, and that's where we come in.
Great. Well, thank you.
I also have, uh, the foundation, um, has been doing a newsletter twice a year, April and September for a couple of years now. Um, and I just, tonight mailed, uh, this one. Um, if you're on the list and you get it in your mailbox, it's because you're a previous donor. I don't think any of these names were for the list. So here's a, here's a, uh, foundation newsletter.
Okay. Thank you, Linda. Thank you so much. Our next presentation is on the watershed fire response and I'm going to invite our fire marshal, Mr. Dave Neimeyer and our fire chief, Jim Gearing. And Matt Johnson. Sorry, Matt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Good evening, council members. Thanks for having us tonight to share some information with you. This summer, we had a fire event in the watershed area and, uh, I, I really appreciate, uh, Matt and Dave for their dedication to our, our city and our fire department on their day off on the weekend. Uh, they heard that call and responded to it. Dave was there for much of the day providing with updates and, uh, and Matt, uh, responded and put our drone, our fire department drone up in the air and was the eye in the sky for, uh, ODF, which was very helpful. So, uh, Dave is here. He's, um, uh, drawn up the summary of what occurred that day and he's going to share that information with you today.
I think first off, it's, it's really rare for us to do a presentation on fires that are an eighth of an acre in size, right? And we do a dozen of those during a typical fire season. What we don't do very often is, is have any sort of fire activity in the watershed, right? Uh, it, it's a, it, it's secure. It doesn't have the public access and of course, uh, human behavior is what causes an overwhelming majority of our wildfires here in Northwest Oregon, uh, until events like this happen. And the pretty rare, especially the, the lightning, uh, storm we had that morning was, was a rather dry one. And, and then, uh, of course we ended up with, with some smoke. Right. Okay, perfect. Um, so this was a really straightforward, uh, you know, lightning storm. Uh, it was, it was well predicted. We knew it was coming. Um, we, we started with some other incidents, uh, that morning uh, that were in the rural fire district. These fires were actually outside of our rural fire district. These were in the, 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 uh, forest lands protected by the Oregon Department of Forestry. Um, so as you, as you were aware, uh, that these happened on the morning of August 17th. Uh, probably around noon on August 17th, uh, the first, uh, smoke column was visible coming from the, the wooded area to the, to the southwest of the Gales Creek community. Uh, the Oregon Department of Forestry had an engine as well as a, a 10-person hand crew from the Oregon Department of Corrections, South Fork Forest Camp. They went into the watershed, uh, in an attempt to locate the column of smoke. Matt joined them shortly after. And then, uh, he requested with, with, to respond with them, our, our seasonal pressure crew that we share with the, the city of Cornelius. And then, uh, the additional chief officer responses that came in as well. Uh, while they were in there, in route for the first fires, when they noticed a second column of smoke. At that point, um, Matt put his drone in the air and, and got the, the coordinates for that, that second column of smoke, located it. It was considerable. Um, the hike into that was four or 5,000 feet. Um, over like one ridge, down another, up another ridge. It was something like 700 feet of elevation gain and then drop and then gain again to get to it. Uh, which posed some significant challenges for the forestry crews that had to, to extinguish that fire. The first fire was located probably six to 700 feet off of the road, off of one of the roads in the watershed. And, and the, the forestry crew, as well as the corrections department crew, went down into that little canyon and, and had that fire lined rather quickly. Uh, that second fire took, took quite a bit of, of hiking into to, to get to. And then again, once they did find it, they found, you know, each of these were about an eighth of an acre. Um, this was the second fire and the, because of that distance, the distance that I spoke of earlier, they weren't able to pump water directly from a fire engine. So the forestry crew set up, you can see in the center of the photo there, it's a, uh, a portable pump. They had to hike that in, uh, on, on their back and then, uh, they sit that up directly into Roaring Creek. Roaring Creek being one of our water sources. Um, in order to, to protect our water source, the, the forestry crews did a, a fantastic job. They had a little, uh, rubber bladder basically that goes around that portable pump. No gasoline, no oil, no firefighting foams were used in any of that effort. And, and then the, the little rubber bladder prevented any leaking fuel and leaking oil from getting into the Roaring Creek source. Um, both of these fires were well above the intakes, uh, for the watershed, for the drinking water sources. So there was no, uh, immediate threat at any time to the, to the drinking water. Um, on, on the right there, you can see one of the lightning strike trees. Um, one of the things I think was really interesting about this is, is lightning fires, of course, are pretty rare for us in Northwest Oregon. We just don't, don't get them very often. Um, when we do, at least in, in my career, um, they, they tend to be kind of confined to that tree. Uh, so this was pretty rare in, in my opinion for, and a kind of a telltale sign of just how dangerous this fire season was and still is. But, but this was kind of the, the tail end of the, the, the high peak of the fire danger. And, um, for a fire to start in a, in a tree like that in deeply wooded timber, um, you know, that, and then spread as rapidly as it did, uh, very fortunate situation that these happen in the daylight. Were able to be seen quickly, able to be attacked quickly and not, you know, a lot of times our lightning storms in the summer come in at, at night. So this one, uh, we had a lot of situations in our favor. Uh, on the left, there is one of Matt's drone photos and then on the right, you can see one of the large trees that was actually actively burning. Uh, the, the forestry crews did have to follow a couple of trees that were on fire. Um, there, there's no way around that, that prevents. If you have fire burning up high in a tree, uh, of course, any wind or anything is going to blow those embers considerably outside of your fire line. So following those trees is, is really the only option you have, uh, you know, outside of digging the fire line and creating more damage well away from it. Um, the, the forestry crews, the corrections crews got on these really quickly, really aggressively. They were joined by employees from the Stimson Lumber Company, uh, Stimson being the adjoining property, uh, to the, to the south and to the west. So, uh, they were able to get in there and, and, and get these down really quick. And then of course, if you recall, that, that afternoon and evening, an even stronger series of storms came in and the crews all had to be pulled out, you know, for the, the purpose of safety. I think that's it. All right.
Any questions or do you have more to say, Dave?
No, I think that was, that was it. Both these were, were limited to about an eighth of an acre, uh, in total, a quarter acre. Again, uh, quarter acre fires are our bread and butter throughout the summer, but, but these being in the watershed, we felt it was appropriate to at least make you aware of them and, and chat about it.
Any questions? I have a question. So with our watershed, when there is a, you know, on the forecast, you guys do a really good job of checking that and keeping us updated. But when there is like lightning storms, like who was, who spotted that fire first and how do we kind of keep an eye on it? Do we know?
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
Was it called into you or?
That the, that the forestry went into first.
Forestry was checking lightning strikes.
Yeah.
And then people were starting to call from all over, from Forest Grove Heights even to see it.
Yeah.
David Hill and Gales Creek over calling. But it, there, and then there was people along Highway 6.
Oh, cool.
It was kind of a mess to figure out.
Interesting. Any other questions or comments? I appreciate the report. It was really good. Did you put this together by yourself?
Yeah, this was. Yeah, this was, yeah.
I love it. It's real good.
Yeah.
Good job, Dave. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Okay, we're going to move on to item F, which is Public Hearings, Ordinances, and Resolutions. The public hearing for ordinance 2024-06 is now open. If approved by the City Council, this ordinance will grant a franchise for Fat Beam LLC to conduct a telecommunications business and a grant, and grant a right to use public rights away within the city. Do any councillors have any conflicts of interest to declare? Seeing none. Assistant City Manager and Finance Director, Mr. Paul Downey, will present the staff report.
Good evening. Fat Beam is requesting a franchise from the city as it plans to build a fiber optic network to serve the Forest Grove School District and its schools. The City Attorney and City Staffs are prepared a franchise agreement based on prior telecommunications franchises approved by the city for your consideration. Construction of this network will begin if this franchise is granted. They may also eventually offer services to other businesses that are along this fiber optic network route. It's also negotiated poll use agreements with the line power that you rent space on its poles, and which will be signed if this franchise is granted. First franchise will be a non-exclusive franchise, meaning other companies provide the same services. The length of the franchise is supposed to be five years or until the city establishes a right-of-way ordinance, whichever comes first. This franchise is not a grant. Fat Beam has the authority to provide cable services, which have to be negotiated with Metropolitan Area Communications Commission. And the franchise agreements list what Fat Beam's obligations are with respect to operating with the right-of-way, such as temporarily or permanently relocating their cable in the right-of-way at their cost when needed. It did request significant changes to the definition of franchise revenue and how that revenue would be determined. That's not unusual when you're doing negotiations. It would have restricted the amount of franchise revenue we collected. Staff rejected Fat Beam's proposed language changes and told them the proposed franchise language in this ordinance is consistent with the language in other similar agreements granted by the city. So the city didn't wish to make changes to the language for consistency among franchises. Franchise fee will be an annual fee of 5% of its gross revenues earned, less bad debts in the operation of facilities and of the provision of telecommunications services within the city. We don't know how much franchise revenue will be collected yet because we don't know what fees they're going to be charging the school district for. And the light power department will also receive revenue from pole attachment rental fees for the use of city's light poles. Staff recommends the City Council approve the attached ordinance, and I'll answer any questions council may have.
Does council have any questions for staff? Seeing none. I will now call on persons who signed up to comment on the ordinance. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Are there any proponents? Seeing none. Is there anyone online? Nope. Okay. Are there any opponents? Seeing none. Anyone wishing to give other testimony? Seeing none. The hearing is now closed. Is there a motion from the council to approve the ordinance?
I move that we approve ordinance 2024-06.
Second. Ordinance 2024-06 was moved by Counsel Martinez and seconded by Counsel Valenzuela. Is there any discussion from the council? Seeing none. Will the City Manager please read the ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number 2024-06, granting a franchise for Fat Beam LLC, a Washington Limited Liability Company, to conduct a telecommunications business and granting a right to use public rights of way within the city.
Thank you. Will the City Recorder please call the roll vote?
Counsel Gusterson?
Yes.
Counsel President Rippey?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Marshall?
Yes.
Counselor Valenzuela?
Yes.
Counselor Ewing?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes. Ordinance number 2024-06 is advanced to a second reading by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of seven to zero. Okay, moving on to F2. The public hearing for resolution 2024-39 is now open. If approved by the City Council, this resolution will adopt findings to support an exemption from competitive bidding requirements for the Public Works Administration Building, declare said exemption, and authorize a process to award such a contract. Do any councillors have a conflict of interest to declare? Seeing none. Public Works Director Gregory Robertson will now present the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Greg Robertson, Director of Public Works. Before you is a resolution to allow city staff to utilize a alternate project delivery method. To use the construction manager, general contractor form, as opposed to the, the typical waterfall project delivery of sequencing, of going through and doing design, and then, then putting it out for bid. This actually integrates the construction manager and general contractor in the design at the very beginning. And we are in the process right now of wrapping up schematic design and are now moving into the next phase of design development, where we will get really serious about a lot of the details. And this, this project, we've been working on for the last six months. And it is to rehabilitate the Public Works Administration Building over on 23rd, and also provide some expansion. The, the architects we're working with have highly recommended that we utilize this method of delivery. Used to be kind of new and shiny. Now it's become more mainstream, and has shown and demonstrated cost savings that can be realized by bringing the contractor in early and working through design issues. And also, in terms of during construction, things are a lot clearer and a few less surprises. So I've developed a staff report for it and proposed resolution under the guidance of Paul, who's done several of these. I've been at this 38 years, and this is going to be my first one. I'm actually kind of excited to, to try it out. And as I mentioned, right now, we are at that point where it is time to, if we're going to use a CMGC method, now is the time to bring them onboard. It's the, it's the appropriate timing between phases, and will realize us the greatest advantage. So our recommendation is that you authorize city staff to utilize a alternate delivery method of CMGC for, for this project.
Are there any questions from the council for staff? Counsel Gusterson?
Is this type of strategy used in other cities?
Yes. It's, it's become commonplace, and really reduces exposure to cost overruns and eliminates a lot of the surprises during construction.
Counsel President Rippey?
Thank you. Thank you, Greg. Just had a question about the timeline. When do you anticipate the construction to start or the remodeling to start? And when do you expect to be finished?
The plan right now is to ready the project for bidding February or March of this next year. Construction will take approximately nine months.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, I will now call on persons who signed up to comment on the resolution. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Any persons wishing to give other testimonies? Seeing none. The hearing is now closed. Is there a motion from council to approve the resolution?
I move to approve resolution 2024-39.
I'll second. Okay, resolution 2024-39 was moved by Counsel Gusterson and seconded by Counsel Martinez. Is there any discussion from the council? Counsel, Counsel President Rippey?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I, I think that this methodology that we're using now for some of these contracts, projects, is best practice. It's the kind of best practice that we used in the manufacturing industry 25 years ago, when I worked for John Deere, and we designed new engines and things. We brought suppliers in to make sure the design was accurate and manufacturable at the least possible cost. So it works. It's worked in, in, in the manufacturing industry for years now, decades. So I, I'm glad to see that this kind of practice is brought to municipal governments that can take advantage of designing things accurately and cost effectively. I just think it's a great methodology. Makes a lot of sense.
Any further discussion? Okay, will the City Manager please read the resolution by title only?
Resolution 2024-39, adopting findings to support an exemption from competitive bidding requirements for the Public Works Administration Building remodel and expansion, declaring such exemption and authorizing a process to award a construction manager, general contractor, CMGC contract.
Thank you. Is there any final discussion from the council before we proceed with the roll call vote? Seeing none. The City Recorder, please call the roll.
Counsel Gusterson?
Yes.
Counsel President Rippey?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Marshall?
Yes.
Counselor Valenzuela?
Yes.
Counselor Ewing?
Yeah.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes. In a vote of seven to zero, the Forest Grove City Council has approved resolution 2024-39. Thank you, Ms. Robertson. Okay, moving on to council communication, I believe. Yep. Council communication. We'll do our council reports. We'll start with Council President Rippey.
Thank you. The Economic Development Commission met on September 12th. There was really no significant item on the agenda. They are looking forward to the economic opportunities analysis to be completed for their end, so that they can review that. I think that will be done pretty soon, within the next month or so. The TV Highway Steering Committee met on September 12th as well, and discussed the process and outcomes for public engagement regarding the project's plan, that this is the project for improving safety and rapid transit along TV Highway from Beaverton to Forest Grove. There will be a draft of an LPA, and I forget what that stands for, sent to the cities in November, so in another month or so, with an expected approval by council in November. So this is an agreement, and this agreement is going to include the expectation and commitment for local funding. So the TV Highway project, the entire project, is estimated to be around $300 million. 350 of that, they're hoping to get funded through federal sources. And the remainder, 150, are just going to get split up between different groups. And of that 150 million, they did not have a specific number when I asked. So we do not know right now what we're going to be asked to commit to in November to help pay for the 150, you know, so.
Mike, they're going to come and ask us to commit to paying, but they're not going to tell us what we're committing to?
No, they're not. No, I'm not saying that. They didn't have the number at that time. Okay? But I'm bringing it to your attention because we don't know the number yet. And that, and so of the 150 million that's supposed to be locally funded, 50 million of that is going to come from the municipalities, Beaverton, Hillsborough, and Forest Grove, and Cornelius. So that's what they're anticipating. It's all going to be decided by the size of the cities. So Beaverton and Hillsborough obviously will pay more. Who knows whether Cornelius will pay anything. And Forest Grove will be asked to pay something. The reason I'm bringing this up is not only are we going to be expected to approve this, this agreement, but it's got to be baked into our budget. And the expectation is, is that we will be able to provide the funds in 2027.
When is our, our levy doesn't expire until 2028, right? So that's just not a long enough...
So I'm just...
I mean, I'm just, I mean, just like to take, can you take that back to the committee? Like Forest Grove lives off a five-year operational levy. So we need, I mean, if there's an expectation that we contribute our fair share, which I understand, right? Then there has to be a reasonable amount of time to allow us to, not, I mean, we're, we're unique in the region that we literally survive off an operational levy. Not every municipality has that, that situation that we have.
Okay. The other thing is, is that I, I am sure staff is going to get involved in this before the next steering committee gets, meets. But I'm letting you guys know because I'm not sure the next steering committee will meet before I'm off council. Okay, so you, you need to be aware that this is going on. And you all, and the other thing is, and I have talked to the City Manager about it, and we're hoping that they will agree that the $850,000 we got from the feds can go toward our portion of what this project is going to look for.
Okay, but wait, what if we already had, is that, what the project's looking for, though, is rapid transit? And so if we put in a mid-block crossing, and if we fix you, the intersection here, inform me more, Jesse.
Not that it would be obligated toward that project, but that it might be able to count as, if we spend it on the local projects that we discussed, U Street, the crossing...
Yes, okay.
That, that would count toward a potential match for any other improvements on the highway, but not necess, but not necessarily be spent on those types of improvements.
Okay, so we're, we're asking for that. Okay, for that kind of like trade. And they're not meeting in October?
I'd have to look.
Can you keep me in the loop?
They usually meet every month.
Oh, they don't meet every month? Not at this point, when they're starting to like talk money? Okay, can you keep me in the loop so I can, you know, try, we can do a transitioning, and I'll jump back on that? I think it sounds like a lot of important stuff.
I was, I was rather, I won't say upset, but the idea that they didn't have a number for us, and then they expected us to agree to it by November, is just, this is not the way to do business.
Wait.
You know, and, and, you know, there, it's just ridiculous. Anyway, that's, I'll keep my mouth shut. Next, the Chamber, obviously successfully hosted the corn roast this past Saturday. They are still continuing to develop a small business hub. I think they're working with Oregon Business, and to, is the closest small business hub currently is in Gresham. And so we need to have one out here at this end of the county. The Chamber is going to host that or create that, so that'll serve Western Washington County. They held several grand open, or not several, they held a couple grand openings, but ribbon cutting ceremonies. One was for Urban River Spirits, and the other was for Willow and Ash. Both businesses are on Main Street. They continue to increase the number of members they have. The vitality and vibrancy of the Chamber is the best I've ever seen it since I've been on council. So I, hats off to the, to those folks, not only to the staff, but to the board there. The next scheduled meeting for the Regional Water Providers Consortium is not until October 9th, and the EDC is on October 10th. So those are my next meetings. And the EDC is on October 10th. So those are my next meetings. And I either volunteered or attended at the 9/11 ceremony, the big flag. I attended the Seven Generation Sculpture dedication. Participated in the sidewalk charcoal and the corn roast. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Counselor Gustafson?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Counsel, Counselor Marshall?
The forestry committee meeting was basically on what the presentation was for the tree trees. That's what we covered, or that was covered mostly in that. As far as parks and rec, we didn't dig too deep into the agenda. There's a lot of conversation with a community member that had joined the meeting with the D study. So that took up the majority of the meeting. But they, they did go over a handful of little stuff here and there. The swim, the aquatic center, the hot tub is under repair. No official timeline for reopening that. Their coordination of, on, of the swim events has transferred over to Cody for recreation. Team for planning purposes and several sessions are open now for registration with the school district. Most projects are complete. NAMSTRAC will be repaired in November. Cornelius is on schedule and they're starting to install new playground equipment at all the schools. And Parks and Rec website, informationally updated to reflect the launch of fall programming, changing new classes offering.
Great, thank you. Counselor Martinez?
So I attended, we had another sister city committee meeting this last week and just finalizing and the schedule. We have a list of the students and adults that will be coming to Forest Grove. And have, we do have families that will be hosting them while they're here. Pacific University is going to take care of the celebration dinner. The menu is finalized. Everything is really coming together well. There's also Linda Allen from Valley Art. She sent everyone several pictures of some paintings as potential gifts for the delegation.
Thank you. Counselor Ewing?
Yes, so as you know, the ATM is going to be on the 28th from 10 to 2, excuse me, from 10 to noon. And that will be at the auditorium. The topic is transportation, getting around the Grove. The teams worked really hard on that, put together some really great speakers and information. So I hope that everybody in the community that's interested in transportation in Forest Grove will be able to attend. There'll be a light coffee and I think pastries to start the meeting on. And then directly after that is going to be the Forest Grove Oktoberfest in the downtown area. I'll let Counselor Donna continue on with that information if she'd like. Forest Grove, as I mentioned, the Ride Connection contract is currently being reviewed because it hasn't been re-uppeded for a while. And they really want, their main thing to talk with them about is parking concerns. They went from three vehicles to 13 vehicles, which is wonderful for the community. But parking around the senior center is creating some difficulties. So that will no doubt be part of their conversation with Ride Connection. Their newsletter is completed and should be out for the end of the year. I wasn't aware of this, so I'll pass it on to the community. The senior center keeps a durable medical supply shop, shack on the property, and that is for free medical, things like gowns and masks and porta potties, those types of things. And you can go in and sign up and take those away as you need them. I thought that was kind of interesting. I was not aware. First Friday dinner will be October 4th at 5:30. That's when the dinner will begin. I think they talked about, you know, people showing up about 5:00, but that's when the actual dinner service will begin at 5:30. Also, October 19th is going to be a meeting of the gardeners. It's a conference that's going to be held at the senior center. And it's about food resources and gardening and bringing everybody together to really work hard on sustainable food for the Forest Grove population. Also, the senior center decided to move its monthly meetings. It was becoming difficult with the time set. So it's now been moved to the third Wednesday from 3:00 to 5:00 PM of the month. And that, of course, is going to be at the senior center. Also, I wanted to mention their budget. They have 350,000 at Edward Jones, 32,000 in CD. So those dollars are things that will need to be discussed with the, with the city and the senior center on how those dollars if they're going to be dispersed, if possibly they're going to be having a senior center or a senior foundation that would use more of those dollars for programs and those types of things. They also have new games, new bingo games. So I wasn't aware that there were so many different varieties of bingos, guys, but anyway, they've added a couple of new ones. So anybody interested in bingo, they do have some new types of games that they're highlighting. Also, I wanted to mention the Housing Supportive Services Network, which is really kind of the conglomeration of all the housing and services in Washington County. They have a meeting on October 2nd from 8:30 to 10:00 in the morning. You can zoom it, which is going to be talking about domestic violence awareness, solutions on housing and needs in the community. They have a lived experience subcommittee that comes together and talks about housing and their lived experience in the community being without shelter. And then they're also doing a health and housing update. I wanted to mention that HUD has released funding notice for COC, which is Continuum of Care to create new units for permanent housing. There's a grant that is in the works for Washington County and it's going to be for $5 million. Once all of that is worked out, then they will put that, those dollars out for proposal bids and it will highlight building programs in our community. I still kind of keep my fingers into the housing issues in the county. And this is probably one of the bitter groups to keep you overall informed. Since I won't be returning, it would be nice that we had a partnership with this particular group as they are, like I said, kind of the coalescence of the housing issues in Washington County. Thank you very much. That's it.
Thank you, Counselor Ewing. Counselor Valenzuela?
Thank you, Mayor. All right, so Jesse's report has an incredible amount of information about the library and we also had Linda's presentation about the Library Foundation. So all I will ask is, I really hope to see you at the Gathering of Groups on October 6th. I will certainly be there. I attended the Policy Advisory Board meeting also. And what we did was we received the consolidated plan, the draft of the consolidated plan 2025 to 2029. And what I'm going to do, I'm going to share with you this PowerPoint because there is a great amount of information in terms of all the community engagement that they have done throughout the county for the different needs that the county may have, particularly for housing. A lot of demographic information of, of the participants. But also other, other information, but it is a very long PowerPoint. So what I want to emphasize this evening are the new goals and objectives that have been added for this next sprint, 2025 through 2029. These are the new goals for, from the, this, from the Policy Advisory Board. From the county, actually. So to increase housing stability of low-income renter households and special populations. So we have like rental assistance, rental rehabilitation and housing-related public services. There, you know, when we think about special, special populations, we have to think about our seniors that sometimes they just need a little help to rehabilitate their home, to make a ramp, you know, to be able to, to widen the doors so that wheelchair, you know, can get through easily. The other goal is to improve public facilities and public infrastructure. Again, that benefit these special needs populations and historically underserved people and neighborhoods. Facilitate affordable homeownership and this is going to be aimed towards not only like low income, but also middle income families, because I think that that's when the, one of the issues that we saw, we always think about homeless, low income, but what about the ones that are considered middle income and still struggle? You know, to make a rent payment or to even dream about purchasing a home. So there will be down payment assistance, new construction of affordable home, affordable ownership housing. And again, rehabilitation for homes. And the fund supportive services for low and middle income and special needs populations. So those are some of the new goals and objectives, but I will share this, this PowerPoint with all of you so you could see what's there. And that's the draft. Right now they're taking, we are providing feedback and more input until this is a done document.
Great, thanks. City Manager Report?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Just a few things. The city did hire Central Culturall to help with our 2040 process to try and bolster our outreach to the Latino community. So that will be kicking off here shortly. Annual town meeting was already covered, Sister City was already covered. We have been in contact with federal housing and urban development regarding the grant for, regarding our grant for low-income solar panels. So that process has started. We'll be submitting the paperwork here shortly and looking at receiving our $900,000 for low-income solar. The draft economic opportunity analysis has been completed. It's going to be presented to EDC soon. Once that is done and there's comments made, we'll schedule a work session with the city council. Building upon Counselor Ewing's remarks regarding Ride Connection, Greg Robertson, Public Works Director and myself, we have been in touch with Ride Connection about the parking of the buses at the senior center. And we're talking with them about an alternative location. And so we're going to be meeting with them, I think, in early October about that. So hopefully that situation at the senior center will improve shortly. Ride Connection has been receptive to that, so thanks to them for collaborating. And then last, the Safe Routes to School grant application was submitted to ODOT last week. Notification of successful applicants is expected at the end of September. As we've mentioned before, in some of the preliminary rankings, we ranked very high. The project involves completing sidewalks along the north side of Vadera Avenue between Rose Grove and U Street, actually Pacific, excuse me. An additional construction of a sidewalk and upgraded railroad crossing on Mountain View Lane along the east side. So I think we're applying for $1.6 million for that. So with that, that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I, with the MMC, the Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium, joined the Transportation Subcommittee to work on legislative priorities. So we, the three, there's a small group of mayors from the region or from the metropolitan area. And so the three priorities we wanted the state legislature to hear was that in their transportation plan would be to finish the 2017 projects. We thought it was really important that they said they were going to do it like those get completed first. These are in no, I don't think these are in any certain order, but our three top priorities were that they finish the 2017 projects, that they figure out the road usage fee to be able to fund maintenance and that they keep the 50, 30, 20 split formula for state, county, city funding. So that's what we are sending back to the MMC and our suggestions for that transportation plan. WCCC met, so that was on the 12th. I met with them after school. On the 16th, I had Washington County Coordinating Committee. What I would like, I think, just to, I have to pick and choose all those things, but I think there was a recommendation to expand Sherwood West for the urban reserve. But the other, the other thing I really want to highlight is that on Friday, there's the Transportation Roadshow at the Public Service Building in Hillsborough, and that's going to be in the afternoon and then public comments in the evening. So if you want to hear about the, the transportation package, you could attend that. The road show is from 12 to 2. The panel's 2 to 4 and the public comments 5, 5:30 to 7:00 PM. And that's September 27th and that's in Hillsborough. So Jim McCully gave a little bit of feedback. So he's our, he works with the League of Oregon Cities. He's a lobbyist with the league. And he was saying that it's really interesting. They've been all over the state doing this transportation show and the communities outside of Portland are supportive of tolling. And then, but in the Portland area, not supportive of tolling, but that's been the, the two main topics that have come up in the Transportation Roadshow are tolling and road usage fee. So if you would like to attend, that is Friday. So also on the 16th, after school, that was during lunch after school, is the mayor, the mayors plus Washington County Chair Meeting. They're going to know more about their levies, but the two levies they have coming up is going to be the library levy. And right now they're aiming for November, the November ballot of 2025. They should know the rate that they're going to go for by April possibly, and I could come back and I'll come back and tell you guys as soon as I know. And then public safety, they have more work to do. Right? Because they also have this tier, they have another layered portion where they have the jail planning program, right? If they have this goal to expand and do the jail by 2030. So they'll have more information right. Excuse me, I'm going to take a drink. I'm going to start coffee. So right now they're in the data gathering. And they'll have that by the first quarter. Geez Louise, sorry. Okay, so we also got an update with deflection, which is the revision to Measure 110. I don't know why my throat's all messed up. Okay. My deflection's going pretty good. So far 14 have been cited. So I think this started September 1st. 14 were cited, four cleared the process, two chose the service route. And then 10 actually had other warrants or other crimes, so they didn't really qualify for that. The big concern with deflection right now is the lack of funding from the state to, to be able to, you know, carry it out. So they have 150,000 in grant funding, but that, right now, that's what they have left and that must last until June. So again, it was just one of those funding mechanisms that the state was like, hey, we're going to, you know, fix this Measure 110. And then, I know I was like listening to this thinking when we did our LOC priorities, I probably would have changed my vote maybe on deflection funding. But the other thing I want to talk about is a number of years ago, Metro passed the Affordable Housing, right? And then also the SHS, the Sheltered Housing Services. And so right now Metro, there's been, there's been some talk, but not directly to mayors. Mayor Beatty from Beaverton tried to ask Lynn from Metro, Metro President, you know, what was going on with this? But there's some rumblings that they're going to try to revise the SHS to take money out of that to do affordable housing. The county's position, well, so there's some things that I want to make sure are really clear. The first year of the SHS program, the county had revenue left over. But that is not the case anymore. All of their funds are being spent. And you're, we're seeing that it is working, right? In the city of Forest Grove, the county worked with us to, you know, to house and shelter and close the encampment on 40 In the city of Forest Grove, the county worked with us to, you know, to house and shelter and close the encampment on forty-seven, right? We have different programs that are working, and all that money is being used. So ni- but the ca- but Metro wants to take some of that funding. And ta- put it back towards affordable housing. So we're not really sure if they're gonna do that by, if they do a tax rate change, then that would have to go to the ballot. Um, but we're just really not kind of sure, like, how they're gonna go about trying to do this. And there hasn't been a lot of communication from Metro Council to the individual mayors in the, in the area. Um, right now there's also a six percent decrease in the amount of revenue that the county's receiving. Um, so they're gonna have to like, go into their reserves anyway. But if, you know, if you, I just, I guess what I'm asking this council is, if you hear people say like, oh, the county's not doing good with that program. I mean, if that's what you think, then you can, I guess, you can have your opinion about that. But just the, the, the facts are that all that money is being used for um, you know, housing services. And H S, S H S. Um, okay, so on last Saturday, I did attend Oktoberfest. And I worked the city booth with our communications team, Joyce and Stephanie, and Karen came and helped and volunteered for a couple hours. We're really trying to get the engagement for our long-term strategic plan and the twenty forty forward plan. So we, the city of Forest Grove booth will be at Oktoberfest again. Um, if any of you could help come and work the booth for an, even if it's an hour or a half an hour, that would be helpful. Because right now I'm scheduled to do the ATM, just to give remarks at the ATM and then go work that from twelve until seven. So um, if any of you could help like, us do that portion of getting that out, that would be great. Uh, we still are, need more numbers. Um, we still would like to engage more with the Latinee community, um, the younger community and the older community. So if you can't work the Oct- if you, you know, are busy and can't do it, then if you can get it through your channels. Uh, your connections, where you volunteer, where you work, that would be helpful. Um, I'm trying to think if there's anything else. I think that's all I have. I, I do want to say a shout out to the Chamber, the Corn Roast. Um, I mean, I, I agree with what Councill President Rippey said. I think, you know, in the last two years, the Chamber's done a lot of work in this community, rebuilding trust, revitalizing. Re-engaging local business owners, and I thought that the Corn Roast and the Chalk Art, I thought that those two organizations working together. There are some changes and some things. It was very, very well attended. It was a successful day in Forest Grove. There were so many people out. I love seeing like, all the people out, having fun, like all the dirty chalk hands. I love seeing young kids, you know, creating art next to like, very seasoned professional artists. Like, I love like, all the diversity. Um, and I just think that Claudia Hope and Amanda did a really good job. So I want to recognize them, and I want to say thank you to all the volunteers who, you know, Councill Rippey, I think, volunteered at the Corn Roast. A lot of my students, my MEAC was there, they were shocking corn. So, and I think that next weekend will be another good day to be in the Grove. Because Oktoberfest is always well-attended and well-received by the community as well. Okay, I'm gonna adjourn this meeting.